To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna go ahead and get started. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Second, favor, closed, passed, and actionized, closed session. September eighteenth and September twenty-seventh, whether or not we should change them are good as presented. I have a motion to approve.
As we rise.
As we rise, very good. Got a first and a second.
Burr?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Eds?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
You ready?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on, communications. Kind of baseball.
So just wanted to take an opportunity tonight to welcome both our middle school baseball team and our middle school cross country teams. Middle school baseball, Coach Hummel here is gonna speak a little bit about this season this year. We've had a lot of success all the way around in a lot of our fall sports. And as you know, some of them at the high school are still going on, including the big games tomorrow night. But first and foremost, we wanted to celebrate our middle school baseball team and how admirably they performed this year in making it to the state tournament.
Alright, thank you. First of all, thanks for having us. Thanks to Coach Burke and to Principal Lanin. We had a tremendous amount of sport from the school and the community this year. I know numerous teachers are here from our school that support our players throughout the season. So we're, I'm very appreciative of that. As Coach Burke said, we had another really good year. We went sixteen and five, finishing fourth in state in the largest class. So this is now our third year in a row, making it to the state tournament. And if these guys want to stand up and be recognized, stand up. They had, and obviously we look forward to, you know, what they're gonna accomplish in high school. So, how do we get him to turn around, Mr. Pritchard?
Letting you there in front.
Alright, ready?
Thank you very much.
The next topic is cross country. And so I wanted to introduce our coaches over there, Coach Boston, Coach Matarra, and Coach Verinsky. Coach Staley is our head coach, but unfortunately, he couldn't make it tonight. But we've had a great amount of success with cross country, not just this season, but season after season. And we're very happy that we can celebrate their successes tonight. Welcome, Coach Boston.
Alright, on behalf of all the coaches, we want to say, nice job. We had an amazing season this year. Both of our boys team and girls team varsity took first in sectionals. And this would be the tenth plus year in a row that both of our teams have qualified for the state meet. We are one of only three programs that have had both boys and girls in the last three years in a row go to state. So it's not something that everybody's able to do, and we're very fortunate that we've done it for more than twelve years in a row. You guys had an awesome season, mostly. We need to turn it over to your parents and thank you, because without the support of the parents, it would've been a rough season. You guys were there for all of it. Everybody came to the meets and supported us. Cross country is like no other sport. It is two miles, and you need somebody cheering you along the entire two miles. And so because of the parents, because of your teammates, we have people along our courses the whole way cheering you on, and you guys should be really proud of yourselves. So if you guys want to come on up here? While they're up here, I wanted to point out, we did have two of our athletes who placed all state. So out of, how many was their total running? Two thirty plus on the boys' side, over two hundred and thirty on the girls' side. We had two of our athletes play eight states at a time. So Mr. Bergen is here, and Eva Moore. If we had more space, you guys could use it. If you haven't had a chance, these guys have great pictures that they like to take. They do a pyramid after every race. We have a Facebook page. You should check it out.
You know what? Let's move it. Well, you can use it. You can use it. He usually sits.
Miss Lanin, hey, great job having all these teachers come to sports.
I know, right? I know. You can put out one call, and that's all it does.
You're the best principal ever. Please come back to the high school.
Alright, moving on. We got Director of Facilities from grounds, annual report.
This is the annual facilities and grounds report. The work order counts and stuff that you'll see will be covered from last fiscal year. Maintenance goals are to continue to execute work with Western School. This is basically the same thing that we've done every year. The only real changes to this, the second to last statement approved for preventive maintenance for district assets through staff and recommendations. We have done some studies in the departments, and we do realize that we've got shortages of preventive maintenance, and we've been saying it for the last couple of years. Later on in the presentation, you'll be able to see what I'm talking about. In addition, the district has the training through Global Compliance Network, and all of our staff members are complying with that. We have an annual requirement for the department. So maintenance priorities, this is the same thing as well that we do every year. Just, I just wanted to highlight the priorities in which we deal with. So emergency requests for those items that have to be done, they're life-threatening, life-safety items. The next priority is health life safety, which we have an annual presentator, an annual visit from the ROE for our health life safety. We deal with those things in terms of very seriously. Routine maintenance is just our normal day-to-day schoolwork orders. And then preventive maintenance is those items that, those are tracked through school do as well. But just, they just don't get done as much as like a routine, regular routine work order. Under the maintenance department, this is the org chart. I didn't actually list everybody's names. Well, I, these people here are the full-time people. What I really wanted to point out is, we have one forty-hour grounds person. He works nine months out of the year, and he's forty hours. We have one guy. Over here, we have seasonal grounds people that are twenty-four hours per week, and they work basically the same part of the year, nine months out of the year, but they're twenty-four hours per week. And we have four of them. So, and basically, we have the whole week coverage. Maybe they might work Monday through Wednesday, or Tuesday through Thursday, Tuesday through Friday, or whatever the case is. We have coverage every day. It's just we have twenty-four hours per week. So it makes it very challenging. The painting crew, we only hire during the summertime. We have four positions during twenty-four hour positions as well. We get our painting done in the summertime. We have a very regimented schedule, and we get most of the painting done. Maintenance challenges, as most of us know, we have aging facilities. Our newest one is eight years old, which is an elementary. We have some sections of our building that were nineteen fifty-seven and older. So those, obviously, we have aging facilities. Those are hard to handle. Aging maintenance vehicles, we are starting to improve on that. We purchased a couple in the last couple of years. I purchased one a few weeks ago. And they're all used vehicles, but we feel that we are adding to our force, and just to do a better service of the business. The challenge is personnel, the need for additional staff to effectively perform preventive maintenance, which I alluded to on the earlier, on the earlier screen. And needs for additional grounds people. It's twenty-four hour people, just are not enough. How many people do you need? In talk, I'm sorry?
Addition.
In talk, on both sides, maintenance and, I definitely need one more preventive maintenance guy, or one guy to do preventive maintenance without a doubt. And speaking with my grounds supervisor, he says we need two more than forty-hour people. And we should cover. The problem with it is, you're trying to find a person that is willing to work twenty-four hour weeks. That's the whole problem. Either they want a full-time job, or, you know, maybe they want a sub, or whatever the case is. But to find those twenty-four hour people is very difficult. So hire two for ease, let twenty-four go, or whatever. You know, I would like to keep those guys, just because we follow, you know, like Dr. Woods says, to trim up the sideburns and stuff like that. That's where we really lack. The mowing, the bulk of the mowing, we can pretty much handle. It's the trimming around the buildings, trimming the ditches, and fence lines and stuff like that. That's where we really suffer. You know, and cutting grass is obviously gonna take a lot of work, so that's where we really suffer.
Do we do our own weed work, or does somebody else do that?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Do we do our own weed spraying, or does somebody else?
No, we do all that. Both my grounds supervisors are certified, are chemically certified. Yes, we do all that. You know, the fields, and, you know, that takes a lot of time to do the fields, and the striping of fields. Actually, we have a part-time guy, a twenty-four hour guy that runs the fields. And he does an excellent job. He's a firefighter. Does an excellent, excellent job, but he's a twenty-four hour guy. So we have to kind of tie him in there. So this is the work order stats. What I want to point out here is, the blue lines are work orders. Remember, this is the fiscal year, last fiscal year. The blue work, the blue numbers are the ones that we transferred from last fiscal year into this fiscal year. And you can see the numbers are pretty small. The green columns are what we actually completed last fiscal year. So like at the high school, we completed six hundred and twenty-four routine work orders. So just regular work orders, we did six hundred and twenty-four. You can see that. These are preventive maintenance work orders. Again, the blue are the ones we carried over from last year. The green ones were theoretically completed, but they weren't completed. We had to close them out to keep our work order system from overloading. So the majority of those workers, I don't have an actual, actual count, but the majority of the work orders were just closed. They weren't done. These are preventive maintenance. So what we've done this year is, we've created a category called deferred. So all of the work, all of the preventive work orders that didn't get, that aren't gonna get done this year, we're gonna put it in deferred category. And then when I do the report next year, the actual numbers of preventive work orders that didn't get done. I mean, I have to identify them out, just, I mean, I can't tell you what numbers did get done and which ones really didn't get done. We don't have the ability to do that, but I put it in deferred category. So that's your report I'll be pointing out. Founder custodial, again, there's the org chart. And again, I didn't put all of the custodians' names in there. That gives you the number that they have for school. We had a couple of changes in head custodians. We had Mr. Christie, who's over at GHS, and we have Mr. Harper, who just got hired over at GMS. So if you look there, if you count that up, there's ten custodians from the high school. Actually, just go to the next slide. So our custodial challenges, what we need to do is align our square footage with our staffing. That's all we need to do. We need to focus on attracting and retaining, retention of quality people. And our equipment challenges, we just have a bunch of older custodial equipment, including snow equipment. This year, I focused on, I haven't purchased it yet, but I have focused on purchasing snow equipment for our buildings. Matter of fact, probably by the end of the month, I'll have a couple of ATVs purchased from the district, and we'll put them where they need to be. So we are working. So this is what I wanted to show. These three lines here, obviously, this is the total square foot per building, the number of staff members they have, and the average square foot cleaned by each custodian. So if you look at this, the three elementary schools are in pretty good shape. GIS, GMS, and GHS, you look at it, so each one of these schools, other than high school, every school has five custodians. Other than high school, but look at the square foot. So we had, we're talking a hundred and fifty-six thousand at the middle school. Ball, for example, has ninety-seven thousand, but they still both have five custodians. So GIS is another perfect example. They have five custodians, a hundred and forty-four thousand. So basically, what this is over here, this is the average number of square foot that a custodian cleans in those schools. That's why I made it in red, because that's where our problems are. So we just need to, we need to talk about staffing up those particular schools, you know, to get, to get us closer to these numbers down here.
Well, what's the benchmark for square footage, do you know?
I would like to see about twenty-five thousand square foot per custodian.
Is that sort of the industry?
Twenty-four, twenty-five, from my experience.
So then why not move some staff around? If twenty-five thousand is the number, we got three schools below that.
We've tried to do that in the past, and we've experimented with that in the past, and it's just not successful. So here, so if you move a twenty-five, really, we don't even have the staff to do that. I mean, we have each person carrying, you know, doing nineteen thousand here.
Well, GES, if it went down to four, that would be twenty-five thousand per. That would free up a body or something like that.
We have, we have experimented with that. It's been pretty unsuccessful. That's definitely something that we're gonna look at in the future. That would be staying successful. What happened? We took the custodian, actually eliminated a slot of a custodian at one of the schools, and it just didn't work out. It just, I mean, as far as cleaning goes, I don't know as far as, what happened as far as cleaning goes. It just, I guess the way that they had it structured, and that the custodians do bus duty in the morning time, there's a lot of other things. Custodians don't just clean. I mean, they do a lot, a lot, a lot of different things, not just a clean position. So the way they're structured over there, they're doing bus duty, they're doing, you know, all of these other tasks as well, you know? So, I mean, it'd be beautiful to say custodians are custodian, but that's just not true.
How many additional staff would you propose to you?
In a perfect world, I'd like to see, so just running the math off the numbers you said, twenty, it looks like you need eight to cross GIS, GMS, and GHS. If twenty-five is the mark. Someone double-check my math there.
I was gonna say seven, but... My dream, but, I mean.
How are we compared to other schools to be left in other schools?
I have no, I have no. I mean, my previous life, when I, when I worked in the other school district that I came from, they worked, they were probably, originally, they were about twenty-five thousand square foot, twenty-six thousand per, per building. And then they just had a huge budget crunch, and so that, they lost on time. So the way it was over there, like a fifty thousand square foot building only had two custodians. That's it. I mean, one night, one day, that was it. So there was, there was a lot more difficulty there. This, this is just an area that we, that we need to look at. Personally, I think the high school miraculously is getting by. And I've talked to the new head custodian over there. I'm not saying it's ideal, but they are getting by. And how they, these other guys, I mean, I've talked to the head custodians at the, at GIS and GMS. GIS lost two custodians when they had to lay off when twenty-four, what's your grade?
Twenty-fourteen. We only lost one.
You lost, but there was two.
We lost one, GMS lost two.
Okay, okay, my mistake. So GMS lost two, GIS lost one.
So we have all these competing as a board. GMS won buses, teacher won a little prize, and GMS won more custodians. We're just looking at the math. Like, why don't we just move on?
Well, I'm, can I speak?
Is it because the building's older or something, or?
Yeah, yeah, I'm asking the question.
Well, I didn't want to be inappropriate. The one, the one thing for sure, we went through this, I've had lots of meetings with Dr. Woods and Mr. Dobbs during that time. They took us down to one-day custodian, and no matter how you look at the building, you smoke it off the square foot, it's about six hundred children. Plus, in these elementary buildings, one-day custodian, it doesn't work. You can't juggle all the things that are going on with six hundred children in a building and one-day custodian. And we did our best with that scenario, and got through that year, collecting a lot of data and notes, and, you know, tried to problem solve the best we could with juggling the schedule. And it was not successful, which after...
It's not necessarily a square foot thing.
No, it's not a square foot thing at all.
This is just, what I'm using, right?
I mean, there are lots of studies that the square foot has nothing to do with schools. The square foot study is more of your hospitals, your big corporate buildings. But when it comes to the age of the children inside the building, and the number of children, that's really what custodial care is all about. And keeping it safe, keeping it clean and ready, you know, during that day, there's so many things that take place with elementary children that you're constantly calling the custodian all over the place. We also extended our, when we brought back the day custodian, we extended so that there was a custodian cleaning the district office. So absorb the square footage over here to also support their needs, because this building just wasn't being serviced, serviced fairly. So I don't know what the answer is.
And that's what's very true. If, I mean, obviously, younger kids need more care than, than, than older kids, I totally agree with. Plus, the snow removal, on a snow day, I mean, you have to have two custodians in the morning, if it's a snow day. That's just all there is to it.
No, well, the principals will pick it up. That's what we did that year. I mean, Mr. Bush and I, we picked it up. The snow removal, whatever it was, we will do it. But let me tell you, I know two people got tired of meeting with me about that topic, trying to just problem solve it, problem solve it, so.
So my basis is just square footage. I mean, I can't speak for the trouble that the principals have. I'm not in that role, but I can just, only I can, I can deal with just square footage.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, isn't one of the custodians now picking up trash? Is that the, the elementary custodian that's also cleaning five years?
Yeah, in the morning time, and then he goes over to the chaps. Health life safety. This is, this is the same thing we've seen every year as well. This is an inspection from the reading office of education, bar marshal comes through with them. Basically, it's a safety, security inspection in each building, and they're very, very, you know. They are much more in-depth, because they have a lot of people. They have six, we did the high school, I don't know if you go or something like that, and there was probably a couple of six right up in the school. What I really wanted to show here is our rating categories. There are more than A and B. Our scores are only A and B, that's why I listed them. A means that there are no, no serious violations at the time of the report, and B means that we're making acceptable progress on those that were violations in the past. And this is our rating. I've kept track of this every year since I've been here. So basically, we've gone up or down in a couple of different categories. But overall, we're making progress, or we meet, we meet the standards of the average school. It is very, very thorough. When we do get a violation through ROE or through health life safety, we create a school report, and we assign it to appropriate individual, and we get it taken care of before. You know, it's, it's a one-year thing. We always get it taken care of before the law takes place. This is the accomplishments that we've made this summer. These are, were our construction projects over the summer. I apologize for some of these photos, but anyway, this is the middle school, the bus lane to the middle school. This whole bus lane right here, which runs on the east side of the school. It looked like this completely up and down, the whole thing. It was absolutely horrible. This one here, a friend of mine actually had a groin, so he took it over his shot. This, the lighter pavement here is what we replaced, and then when we replaced, we overlaid this, the parking area on the south side of the building. Science wing roof replacement. This is a typical shot of what the condition of that roof was to start with. This is a replaced roof, complete, it was a complete tear-off and replacement. And part of their scope included this walkway down through here, which is, gives us a path to our equipment, so we don't damage the, damage actual material. I mean, you really can't damage it that much, but if you drop screws on it and stuff like that, it could be issue. Security entrance at, at the high school. This is just the internal shot where the officer sits, and this is an outside shot. Basically, what I wanted to show here is, we built this whole kiosk right here, and we were able to match the masonry, even the molding on, from the original brick. It was built twenty years ago. So we ran a mass, and we got pretty much, that turned out really nice. And this is the same thing, the upgrade in security. What I wanted to show here is, these used to be door handles on here, now they're, now they're panting bars. So you actually have to get the panting bar to go out. And on this side here, this is the entrance going into the school, the outside doors. So at eight o'clock in the morning, or whatever time it is, eight, eight, eight o'clock in the morning, they automatically lock there on the timer. They automatically go lock. And this right down here is a push button, and right up here is a camera. So whoever enters the building has to push the button, and the officer identifies... So whoever enters the building has to push the button and the officer identifies the person and buzzes into the building. So those buildings are locked anytime after, after the kid gets in. Next slide. Signage at G E S. Uh, we were able to construct the sign, this has, this has a very good view from both sides. The sign is not lit, but it's, it's a pretty nice signage for G E S. We actually identified five from the position of the sign. Excellent. Scoreboard installation, I think Dusty and Olive are pretty proud of this one. This is the north side of the football field, this is the south side, general trough. If you haven't seen this thing in operation, this thing, this thing is nice. It sounds awesome, but, but the scoreboard is just, just very, very nice. Uh, next slide. And this is the one for the soccer field, I was actually able to get that when we had it powered up, so. This page, I mean, the, the picture's distorted, but it's very, very nice if you haven't seen it, very nice. Uh, next, this is for the department, uh, control steam labs at G M S and G I S. Upgrade the bus lanes for G I S and G M S. And what I'm talking about at G M S, that east lot, the east asphalt lot didn't get done last year. That's where the bus is going and they can turn around when they turn onto big concrete. That just needs to be, uh, milled and overbed asphalt, just to, just to beef it up a little bit. At G I S, we're gonna do something similar over G I S, that would be, we're gonna score this pass on. Um, add cameras to the security system at Ball, Chatham, and Middle School. Um, I already got the bid for the middle school, uh, the other two schools the bid should begin this week sometime, we'll, we'll proceed with that. We'll do that out of excess farm proceeds. Uh, we'll continue to ask, to assess the district needs for further construction projects and I provided a project list, which is the list you have in front of me. The potential, once it's sales tax lifting, if that happens. But not, you still have a list of projects that could be done.
Where you go on it? Steam lab, do we add head count for that or do we just?
I'm gonna refer it, Jim.
The stack that we have, are you asking personnel?
Basically, yeah. Does that force us to add head count to do it?
It does not force it, we're currently offering the steam courses right now at G I S and G M S. Of course, big picture, we would like to add steam personnel in the buildings.
Thank you. Everybody good, Mike? Thank you. Mike, appreciate it, that's info, no action. Uh, moving on, uh, we got the junior ROTC program information on the high school. Good evening.
Uh, I also brought Sergeant Mulkey with me from the United States Army. Came across the idea of bringing junior ROTC to the high school and bringing in front of you because it is, uh, a two to five year long process to even get a unit at a school. Um, and I speak with that from experience, I brought a unit to West Orange High School, we opened the doors of West Orange, or, uh, at Waukaiwa. Uh, and we got it year three at Waukaiwa, so how am I gonna go through that? So the purpose of ROTC, number one, the mission is to motivate young people to be better citizens and they really focus on leadership, on citizenship, discipline, and service to the community. And I add this in there, we're starting here, because it is not a recruiting tool, there is nothing in the curriculum, they are not even allowed to talk about recruiting. Uh, they, if you want to join the armed forces at West Orange, I had Air Force ROTC and I had five, six Marines come out of that program and then others that weren't even in ROTC. They, it, it has nothing to do with, uh, recruiting, it has everything to do with leadership, citizenship, and service.
Could something like this be helpful for a student that wants to go to one of the service academies, like the Air Force Academy or that?
Absolutely, it is, absolutely. And it's not only the service academies, but it's also any ROTC program at a university academy. Uh, those kids will be kind of moved up from the top because they have experience in ROTC.
Can that equate to scholarship dollars possibly for those students?
Very, very possibly, yes. Uh, so the curriculum that they go through, number one, it's equitable, it's challengeable, uh, it's challenging and all, every single lesson that they do has four, four parts or four things that they focus on. It's motivation, learning, practice, and then applying whatever they're learning, uh, to the real world and, and things that they do. Uh, the one thing I really like about the program is it, it forces kids to collaborate with one another and work with one another. Uh, it, it requires them to reflect, it requires them to do critical thinking skills. Uh, you know, it's things that we've been looking at in Common Core and, and, uh, career motivated, uh, classes and stuff. It's all encompassed in one program. The curriculum includes things like leadership, health and fitness, first aid, uh, communications, and it is all aligned a hundred percent with Common Core and career technical education. Uh, it is tried and true, it's not something that they're creating, uh, as we speak. There are a lot of units across the country, uh, and all four branches of service have this same type of curriculum. It's all based on Common Core and the career technical end standards. Uh, it starts with a foundational class and then it builds throughout the four years from there. So it's four elective credits, uh, if we got it next year, anybody freshman through senior could take that foundational class and then over the next four years, it would build to the four different levels of, uh, a full ROTC program. So even if we got a program next year, they would say, okay, even if you're a senior, you could still participate. So I, we're just coming in and only freshman kids as a foundation level, anybody still could, yes or no?
How's it funded?
We're gonna get to that. Um, the curriculum, there are six or seven units if, uh, school, uh, chooses to have a marksmanship area. And these seven units go from the foundation through the senior year. So, uh, I believe units one and two are the foundational class. Uh, and then you spend like your second year almost solely on unit three, which is knowing yourself. And again, it goes back to leadership and citizenship and service. Uh, those are the foundations of ROTC programs, no matter what branch of service we go with. Uh, it is a three to five year process to get a program. Uh, it can be expedited if we have congressional, uh, push. Basically, the way they've explained it is congressman calls the Pentagon and says, this school should have a unit and voila, the school has a unit. Uh, we have a little bit of an inside track to that because we have Colonel Hendricks, who's here in town. He's, son is freshman at the high school. Um, he is a full-bird colonel that retires in June. He's also interested in applying for the officer side of the position, um, when he gets out. Uh, he has connections not only with, uh, parishmen and senators, but to the gentleman who runs ROTC programs for the entire, uh, Midwest. The reason I kind of presented with the Army is because they're the ones, number one, who's willing to sit down and talk to me. Uh, and number two, because Colonel Hendricks, you know, we have the inside track on some of that, uh, you know, if we choose to try to go after a program. So the need is ten percent of the student population, Dusty just did a survey not too long ago, had about a hundred, or two hundred and fifty kids uh, on clubs and programs that are possible or they're interested in. Uh, and in that small sample size of our fourteen hundred kids, we have about thirteen percent. So you multiply that, you know, we're right on par. They were about ten percent of the student population. Uh, they require two rooms of the Army, uh, and any of the branches will do is they will, uh, come and do a site visit to make sure. So one of those rooms is for supplies, uniforms, things like that. The other room is for, uh, instruction in the classroom side of it. Uh, but they, if they come to your building and they deem that you're not, you're not set up to have a program or you don't have the space to have a program, then they won't give you one. They will mark it and you'll go back to the bottom of the stack until you can find, uh, that space that's needed. Uh, and then the one thing that's not required, what the Army does offer, is a, a riflery range or a riflery program. But that's not required. What is needed, and here's the cost of it, it is two, uh, one officer and one N C O. Uh, and neither of these ladies or gentlemen can be retired more than three years. Uh, and so they, they do that. Now, once you get a position, I will tell you, you know, then you can stay for twenty years if you want. But you can't be removed from the service more than three years. I will tell you from my experience hiring Air Force ROTC guys, now granted, I was living in Orlando, Florida, uh, but there were no shortage of candidates around the country that, because they want a teacher, getting out of military and they want to do something besides sit around. So there was no shortage of candidates. Uh, the other thing that I like about the Army is they do have that many more candidates. You know, I was a Marine, there's only a hundred and eight thousand Marines. Uh, the Army's got over four hundred thousand members, uh, and so more of a pool to choose from as we're looking for people to be the officer and the N C O. Uh, the cost of it is, the Army splits the cost with the school. Uh, all four branches do that. They, it's approximate thirty-eight thousand for an officer and thirty-two thousand for an N C O. And the Army pays the other half of that contract. So they, the Army matches that, they pay another thirty-eight to the officer and they pay another thirty-two to the, uh, N C O. What's needed right now is, all this is a lot of talk until I'm able to fill out the paperwork to send it in to the federal government, to, uh, start the process. It does not start until they get those documents. Uh, it's a simple application, it basically gives some, uh, very brief demographics on the school and the school itself. And there's an evaluation worksheet that goes along with it. Uh, there's always a possibility of applying to all four. That's what I did when we brought the program to Waukaiwa. I started at Waukaiwa six months before we opened the doors because it was a relief school. Got the program, two years later, I applied to all four, it just so happened the Air Force was the one that called me. Uh, and it could happen like it did there. I got a call one day that said, you are two years out from getting a program. And two days later, the Air Force called me and said, had three schools bow out. You got twenty-four hours to tell us whether you want a program or not. And so at that time, we were like, yes, sir, we knew, uh, and we went after it. The other thing that the Army provides is all of the equipment, the uniforms, the computers, the technology. So, you know, you have the salary, half of the, the two salaries, but they also have all of this and they give you a supply budget every single year, uh, and that to replenish.
Are there any costs that the students would have to cover?
No, there are not. The only thing that I can think of from my two schools that had units is the initial startup of just putting shelves in for the supply room. Uh, because you do have to organize uniforms and things like that. Uh, so that's the only thing, everything else is provided by the Army and the supply budget. And they will replenish uniforms, I believe, every three to five years. Uh, if your program grows, they give you extra uniforms for the growth of the program and things like that. The other nice thing that the U S Army provides is a program called STAR while you're waiting to get a unit. Uh, it stands for Students Taking Active Roles. Um, and like Sergeant Mulkey, he would be the one running that club. It would be an after-school club, once a week or once every other week, uh, where they'd meet for a couple hours. And they run through the same stuffs that you do in the foundations class and I believe the second year class. Uh, they do a lot of stuff on leadership and character, um, and it's completely run by the Army. So you kind of get the foundation of ROTC set while you're waiting to get the unit there. Uh, which is a nice perk that the Army has and the other three branches y'all have. Uh, why G A, G H S? First of all, there is no units in central, central Illinois, which I can't believe, it doesn't make any sense to me at all. Uh, but there are no units. My former employee, I got a call from them because they found out that I was presenting to you and they want the information to try to get an ROTC program now. Uh, so that's kind of ironic, but, so there are no units here. Uh, there's a high sense of patriotism. I'm sure some of y'all saw the pictures from, uh, Flag Day, uh, and Patriot Day where the kids were flying flags. You know, it is, it's entrenched in the school, uh, and it's entrenched in the community. Uh, and then we get, uh, more students involved while building just better citizens. That's what we all want, run and build better people, uh, in the end. Uh, and it's just like the mission of ROTC in the Army is to motivate young people to be better citizens. And ultimately, that's, you know, what we're getting out of it. Uh, and the other couple of reasons is we would have color guards at every single event that they are needed, whether it be games, graduation, award ceremony, board meetings, if you wanted to color guard. So, and as well, the STAR program provides color guards as well. If we were to start that club, they would get them t-shirts or something, they would be able to provide the color guard and start learning that part, that side of it as well. Uh, they also have the ability to compete, uh, statewide and nationally, color guard, drill, leadership, and then riflery if that was part of our program.
Does, does the commitment level allow for students that are involved in other activities to still participate in this as well?
Absolutely. Uh, I can tell you from experience, I had three hundred and fifty cadets at West Orange, probably half of them were involved in something else where there'd be athletics. Now, you do have those that just go all in in ROTC base. Uh, I had one, actually, she was my, my commander, um, she is serving the United States Marine Corps right now. Uh, she ran our drill team, we were the number one drill team in the nation at West Orange and it was because of her. Uh, the officer and the N C O, they just kind of stood there and they let her run the thing and we competed nationwide and won first place nationally, so. So you have people like her and then you have those that can do both. And then finally, uh, it's just, it's just pride, it's pride in school, community, state, nation. Uh, you know, it, it, being a gentleman who went in the Marine Corps at seventeen years old, I firmly believe in this and I think it will benefit our kids, so. Any questions? Myself or Sergeant Mulkey?
I have a comment. Actually, newly I was, I did like the same system in high school and now I'm in Waukaiwa, I was a cadet, definitely similar to this.
Now, when, I was just gonna say, when, uh, when I'm here, my dad was coming on board, if you ever need somebody to sell this program, find out the Marine.
I'll be honest, I'd love to go with the Marine ROTC, but, and we got an Air Force guy right here.
But, but, uh, the reason for this tonight, this presentation tonight is really to just bring to the forefront informational, national, the thought process behind it. Because there's some things behind it that need to be done in order for it to become information. And it's nice, quite frankly, that there's a bit of a timeline.
Um, and eventually, what we, what I would need is your approval to fill out the paperwork to start the process. Uh, again, it's, it's, there's not a lot of it, uh, but nothing gets moving until the day that I send it in.
So does this occur during school hours or is this more of an after?
It is part of the curriculum or an elective class, it's during school day.
Elective class, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect your class sizes up or down?
If, if, what it would more likely affect is another elective. So if you're taking a couple of kids out of, uh, an R class to be in ROTC, you are gonna affect your numbers in the electives uh, some way when you're talking to, you know, a hundred plus kids.
And the marksmanship piece? Where would that occur on? Is it somewhere to a range?
Do you know the answer to that, Sergeant?
Sir, and, and some of the other schools, they've been able, since it's only like air rifles, it's not an actual rifle. Um, they've been able to set some of the ranges up at the school where it's outside, on the other side of the football field or something, maybe you have a mound and then build one of the berms. But it's, it's air rifle, so it's not a, you know.
Uh, and we can find out if it could be an offside as well, that's probably a possibility.
Where I went to high school, we actually had a P E day a year where the entire school went out for an hour, it looked like an angel or something. We went all the way and everybody shot a torpedo, shot boys, girls, big, small. And there was one person, each kid, but he, you know, he chuckled, he potted deep, deep respect.
Sure. I actually, I did not know that that was even an option in the air rifle team. Most of my experience with ROTC has been with Air Force, uh, at the schools that I've been at. Uh, Orange County had fifteen out of twenty high schools in Orange County had an ROTC program. Probably 10 of them were Air Force, and then there were a few Army, a few Navy, and there was one Marine Corps unit, so.
And if we wanted to add more like Air Force and then, like, we could add them, it would be, they'd all, you'd all work together?
Once you get one, that's the one you go with.
Oh, yes?
Yeah, yeah. It just event, like, when you're applying, you can apply for all four and then kind of first come, first served. You know, I think it's a huge advantage to have Colonel Hendricks sitting in the back pocket to say, you know. And the Army also has been kind enough, they sent the liaison from Indianapolis that does, tries to bring programs and help schools bring programs. He came and met with me for a couple hours, drove over from Indianapolis just to meet with me. So that shows their willingness to want to bring a program here as well.
This is just information?
Yes, yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You can leave now.
Let's go get down to the kitchen.
Sorry, that one guy.
Davey, thanks for your time. Moving on, four, five, citizens, this is an opportunity. There's something on the agenda. Somebody wants to bring them up to the school board at this time? Dr. Cody, talk for about five minutes. Tell us your name. Nope, nothing on the agenda. Okay? Okay, moving on. We have some consent agenda items, five one to five nine. They wish to pull any of them? If not, I need a motion to approve as presented, since it's the second. Do you want to pull one?
I did.
You can pull one, which one?
How about five?
Pressure financial report? Okay, anybody else? Do I have a motion to approve five one, five six, five eight, nine as presented, since it's the second? Thank you. Do you have questions?
Sarah? Sharon?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Raven?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Four, five, seven, five eight, four, five, six, seven, eight. So we do a lot of, just taking the opportunity with all the teachers, I think you're all teachers. I feel like it's gotten lost in the shuffle, what we're, what we're doing with the finances. I just feel like I need to clarify, because I'm on the finance committee, and I know Charlotte's not here, but... We talk, we talk in lingo, all these terms, and I'm in the financial industry, so let's just lay it out nice and easy. The Illinois Association of School Boards asks us at a minimum to have, at the end of June, we've used last year's tax dollars and have 15% minimum as a, as a kind of reserve. Much like your household. You always, you always talk about having emergency cash. It's kind of like that. That's what the Illinois Association of School Boards asked us to have. So what happens is, and I think where the misunderstanding comes in is, how do we do this? You have your, you have your school year, and the end of June is the end of the year, so right in the middle. What happens is fund balances become skyrocketing in about May because we're still, we're used, we're still in school, but we have maybe 20 million in early tax money coming in. It comes in in this first half of the year while we're still at school. It's for, according to the I A S B, it's for July 1 on. So what you see is, is fund balances blow up like a balloon, and then we eat off of them, you know, for the seven, 10 or 12 months. So obviously, there's the moncent sales tax thing going on, how that could affect, actually, we've talked about how that could affect us. But there's a lot of interest in a lot of things. Mike, it sounds like you need about 13 more people. I, I just wanted to kind of explain, and I want the community to understand what we're doing with our money. So we've added eight teachers this year. They were all paid through two. That helps a lot of people, but we did it. And that can, we've, we've got to manage this. So, and that's why we ask, Mike, so don't take offense when we ask, what do you need? Everybody wants something, so that's it. It was nothing about the actual board. We used to talk about peaches in one basket, we have them for another. You probably missed those meetings, but...
And you're lucky!
Yeah, I bet. That's it. Just clarification, what we're, what we're trying to do, to meet their standard. Okay, all right, second. Ash, please.
Burr?
Yes.
Sharon? Maddox?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Raven?
Yes.
Cap?
Moving on, the personnel consent, I've got six one to six one nine, they wish to pull any of them? I need a motion to approve as presented, since it's the second.
Sharon?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Raven?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes. Moving on, communications, we've got some future board meeting today. Remember, it's a curriculum meeting, 16, 18, Congress, Triple I, 29, regular board meeting. Anybody else got anything to add? Have recite the board. Right, informational. At this time, seven, two, opportunity for citizens to address the school board on any topic. Doesn't have to be only a topic, it could be anything. Anybody here that would like to do that? Yes. Please do, just take your name.
Sure.
Cody?
Good evening. My name is Alison Q., and I've been a part of the Ball Chatham family for 13 years. Not only have I had the pleasure of serving our youngest learners as a kindergarten teacher, but also have had the opportunity and privilege of watching my own three children grow and flourish in an environment where educators put children's needs first. On behalf of the members of the V C A, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I would like to express our gratitude to the members of the board for their continuous work and dedication to the creation of our future contracts. Their efforts do not go unnoticed. That being said, I am here to express the V C A's deep concern for the challenges facing the students and families of our district. At the last school board meeting, the V C A shared some of their systematic and structural concerns that are adversely impacting the students of Ball Chatham. We are here tonight to continue voicing our support for our children. In the past several years, our district has experienced exponential growth. While growth can bring opportunities for positive change, it is also, it also can create growing pains. One very important example of these growing pains includes our ability as a district to attract and retain quality teachers. Ball Chatham has had the reputation as the destination district where teachers begin and end their careers. Unfortunately, this is no longer the case. In the past five years, the district has approximately lost 150 teachers. This year alone, the district has employed over 40 new to the district. With such a high rate of turnover, it is our students and their ability to have access to quality education that suffers. While we understand that attrition occurs naturally in all districts, we should not be losing outstanding teachers to neighboring districts like Rochester, Pleasant Hills. In an effort to stand the tide, enduring, ensuring appropriate class sizes, providing adequate transportation for educational as well as extracurricular activities, and maintaining consistent and balanced expectations throughout the district are necessary and appropriate steps that will restore the Ball Chatham to its position as a destination district. The V C A is committed to working with the Board of Education and other stakeholders to solve these problems. We want Ball Chatham to be that destination district for students and staff. We are willing to work collaboratively and transparently with anyone in the community to make this reality. We again thank you for this opportunity to advocate for the students and the community we serve.
Could I ask a quick question? What, could I ask, what was that number you gave for the?
Approximately 150 in the last five years.
And do you know the cause of the, the departures that I mentioned? Sometimes it's moving out of state.
Sure.
Do you know what that breakdown is?
I do not.
So it's not necessarily all due to the dissatisfaction of, or, or whatever?
Probably not.
Would the district, it would have other, time-related, family-related reasons?
Correct, okay.
I, I also just want to ask, and again, I'm not trying to push on, Scott, I'm just trying to have an open dialogue here. That approximate 150 over the past five years, can I, can I ask where is the source of that data, or where, where that came from?
It came from a representative in each building, looking, going through different resources that they had, finding out. I think some even checked with secretaries and things that just to have them come and dawn.
Okay.
Best teachers on the?
Only teachers, only, you said 150 teachers, right? Only teachers?
But that would include certainly work, support staff as far as like speech, like special ed staff.
I mean, 150 teachers means full-time staff or?
Correct.
You notice we ask quite a funny question. I saw on Facebook today where we sit here with dumb looks on our face, and we cannot answer. Just know that.
I, thank you.
Anybody else? Got anything they want to put to the conversation? Anything going on in the district?
I can't swear on mine.
I need a motion to approve. All of the favor. Tonight, thanks for your attendance, everybody.